It's time to recognize our council member, Councilmember Buchanan, who served District Four in the City of Jackson just in that capacity for 26 years and served the City of Jackson in various ways throughout his entire life. He was a role model to, I think, all of us up here, mentor to most of us up here. I grew up with Derrick, one of my first memories I share of Councilman Buchanan. Derrick and I worked together at Catfish Cabin. And Derrick went to go see a girl on his break, and the car broke down. This is before cell phones, so nobody knew where he was when going back to work, so they called his house. And then Councilman Buchanan showed up at Catfish Cabin. I thought he was seven foot tall at that point, just the presence that he had. And I'm sure that Derrick remembers that day very well. But no one knew the city charter like he did. He was a fantastic public servant and wanted to serve everybody and wanted to make Jackson better every day. And he will be sorely, sorely missed. So at this time, I'll open up if any council member would like to share anything regarding Councilman Buchanan.
Mayor. Harvey Buchanan and I, Jesse J. Cox, John Bannister, came on at the same time. My buddy has been sitting beside me for over 20 years. We've had fun and we've had arguments. He was a joy. He was my friend. He was your friend. There wasn't nothing that, if it was right, he wouldn't do for my ninth district. I guarantee you, he was gonna take care of his. And he was an example to me. And I loved Harvey. I always loved Harvey. I'm gonna really miss Harvey. I remember one of the funniest things Harvey and I always kidded him about riding the fence. And he'd say, "Cisco kid, you doing the same thing." And when he had his accident out on Highland there at Crystal's, he was in the hospital, wasn't very happy. And so I went in to see him. "How you doing Harvey?" He said, "I'm gonna make it." I said, "I know you will." And I said, "Did they operate on you?" "Yeah, they did." I said, "They see all those holes in your butt from riding the fence?" I got the biggest laugh you ever had out of Harvey Buchanan. And anybody that knew Harvey knew he was a gentleman. I thank the opportunity the Lord gave me to be with him, sitting here for 20 years. I loved Harvey. Thank you.
Harvey was a great mentor to a lot of us. I mean, going back when I was a kid at the Boys and Girls Club, all the way back when I was a student at Jackson Central Area High School and I had Exxon service station. He was always a person that you could always go to. And we had been talking for the next couple of years about going to Boys and Girls Club reunion to bring us all back together to celebrate Harvey. I mean, Harvey was someone that we all know he talked about was always the rainy day fund. That was his favorite thing, asking about that money. Harvey was a great father. He was a legend to this community. From his father all the way up to now and will always be. He was somebody that, when I first came on the council in 1999, he took me up on his wings and protected me. And there was always some things that would come up. He would make sure that this council was together. He was our leader. Whether we wanted to vote with him, sometimes we did just because it was Harvey. He was afraid of us to do the right thing, but he's caring so much about his district. We're gonna miss him. I think his district's gonna miss him. And I just want us to continue, thank his family for sharing Harvey with us so many years. And he's gonna be missed.
Carry nothing out. The Lord gave and the Lord had taken away. Blessed be the name of the Lord. We are sojourners, strangers, as were all our fathers. For our lives are as a story that has been told. Lord, make me to know mine end and the measure of my days. What it is, I might know how frail I am. Brother, I would not have you to be ignorant concerning them with sleep in Jesus. For if we believe that Jesus died and rose again, we along with those who sleep in Jesus, when he shall return. Those who died in Christ shall rise first. We shall be gathered together to be caught up to meet the Lord in the air. Family, wait on the Lord. Be of good courage. He shall strengthen thy heart. Again I say, wait on the Lord. Our God is a holy God. He's a loving, kind, and sweet God. Even as we mourn the passing of this our dear brother, we can celebrate the fact that to be absent from the body is to be present with the Lord. Therefore, we bless the name of God on today we thank Him for. You may be seated. This privilege we have to come together once again. And even in this hour, as we celebrate life of this our dear brother, Brother Harvey Buchanan, we thank God for this opportunity to express to our God our appreciation for allowing Him to pass our way and touch the lives of all who is assembled here on today. Therefore, we give God praise as our Creator. Allowing us His privilege, we certainly give reverence to Jesus the Christ, who is our elder brother and redeemer. We're thankful for the Holy Spirit, which is our Comforter, Teacher, and our Guide. To all of pastors and ministers who have come today to our dignitary staff of our city, thank you for your presence on today. To you, brothers and sisters in Christ who sent a man to be in this family, even in this hour, even as we celebrate the life of this our brother, it's good to be here. It's good to be here because we have the opportunity to thank God for the life that is Harvey Buchanan and to also give Him praise for all the things He has done in all of our lives. We are going to follow, we want to thank the family for taking the time to put together an Order of Service. We will follow this Order of Service as per the family. If there be any corrections or any changes made, it will be upon the direction of the family. Therefore, both you that have an Order of Service, calls for a selection by New Hope Choir, after which there will be an Old Testament and New Testament Scripture given by Pastor William Watson. Then there shall be a prayer by Pastor Dennis Blaylon, selection by Reverend Andrew Collins, resolutions and acknowledgements by Mrs. Sandra King. Reflections and proclamation will be given. And the family has requested two minutes, please, that reflection and proclamation will come from our mayor, Mayor Scott Conger, our former mayor, Jared Gisney. Also reflections from Jerome Maxey, a friend. Correct me if I don't pronounce this right. But there is also reflections from Ursula Cole, former member of the Boys and Girls Club. Those of you who will be given reflections and proclamation, there is a podium that has been prepared and presented for you and you may do your proclamations and reflections at that time from that podium. Also, it calls for a selection by Reverend Pastor Franklin Collins. And then there shall be a eulogy which will be given by Pastor Larry Mercer. We will follow again the program as it has been instructed by the family. And my brothers and sisters, as we gather together on today, let the celebration of life of this our dear brother Harvey Buchanan, let the celebration, let it begin. Can we give God a hand clap of praise? God bless you.
Come on, let everybody say praise the Lord. Come on, let everybody shout praise the Lord. Somebody shout hallelujah. Man, we count it a blessing and a privilege to be in his house one more time. An opportunity that we don't take for granted. Y'all ready? We're gonna sing a little bit. Is that alright? Let me tell y'all something. While we celebrate Brother Harvey today, I can remember a little over 21 years ago, when I met Brother Harvey, we came in and it was my first male chorus rehearsal with the fellas. And they was a little younger then. They looked a little better too. And Hope was playing at the time and she started playing this song. My daddy, he looked at me and he said, "You know what song that is?" I said, "No." Well, Brother Harvey started singing and at the time that was one of my favorite songs that we gonna sing it. If y'all will clap your hands, will y'all help us? Y'all come on, help us. I remember when I first got baptized again. Yes, I do. Mama was holding my hand. She said, "Ain't no harm in my God's water." Yeah, I went down in the water. The water was cold. It chilled my body, but it didn't chill my soul. Still water, run deep, y'all. Still water, it runs so deep. Still water, they run deep, y'all. I said, "Still water, they run deep." Now the preacher said, "Come here, son. We gonna baptize you today." Oh yeah, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, in the name of the Holy Ghost, yeah. I went down in the water. The water was cold and it chilled my body, but it didn't chill my soul. Still water, they run deep, y'all. I said, "Still water, they run so deep." Oh, I know they do, you see. I said, "Still water, they run deep, y'all." Now I never will forget that day, y'all. When I came out of God's water, yes, I did. I had a new walk. I had a new talk. Telling everybody my God lives, yeah. Went down in the water. The water was cold. It chilled my body, but it didn't chill my soul. Still water, they run deep, y'all. I said, "Still water, they run so deep." Oh, yes, they do, y'all. I said, "Still water, they run deep, y'all." The reason why I know that they run deep, y'all. 'Cause ever since that day, I've been sometimes up, I've been sometimes down. Been through it all, you see. You see God's love, God's love, it just keep on holding me. When I wanna do wrong, you see the Holy Spirit tell me your own, son. Since I came out the water, I'm a covered man. Listen, y'all, the water will clean. It'll clean your heart. It'll clean your mind. It'll clean your soul. Anybody here know what I'm talking about Harvey? Have you ever been down? Have you ever been down? Have you ever been down? Down in the water? Oh, yes, I have, y'all. I got to tell everybody. I got to tell the world that God's water, God's water, God's water, God's water. Said it run deep. Yeah, oh yeah.
Scripture reading will come, Old Testament from Psalm 90. Hear these words afresh. Lord, you have been our dwelling place in all generations. Before the mountains were rolled forth, wherever you had formed the earth and the world, from everlasting to everlasting, you are God. You return man to dust and say, "Return, O children of man. For a thousand years in your sight are but as yesterday when it is past, or as a watch in the night. You sweep them away as with a flood. They are like a dream, like grass that is removed in the morning. In the morning, it flourishes and is renewed. In the evening, it fades and withers. For we are brought to an end by your anger, by your wrath, we are dismayed. You have set our iniquities before you, our secret sins, in the light of your presence. For all our days pass away under your wrath. We bring our years to an end like a sigh. The years of our life are seventy and even by reason of strength eighty. Yet their span is but toil and trouble. They are soon gone, and we fly. We fly away." New Testament reading will come from 1 Corinthians, Chapter 15, beginning at verse 12. Now if Christ is proclaimed as raised from the dead, how can some say to you that there is no resurrection of the dead? But if there is no resurrection of the dead, then not even Christ has been raised. And if Christ has not been raised, then our preaching is in vain and your faith is in vain. We are even found to be misrepresenting God because we testified about God that he raised Christ whom he did not raise if it is true that the dead are not raised. And not even Christ has been raised. And if Christ has not been raised, your faith is futile and you are still in your sins. Then those also who have fallen asleep in Christ have perished if in Christ we have hope. In this life only, we are only of a people most to be pitied. But in fact, Christ has been raised from the dead, the first roots of those who have fallen asleep. For as by a man came death, by a man has come also the resurrection of the dead. For as in Adam, all die; so also in Christ shall all be made alive. This is the word of God.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, our God, we gather here on this day at this appointed time, even in the presence of what some may consider death. We thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for the gift of salvation. Thank you for the gift of eternal life. Now, Lord, as we gather here on this day, we pray now for what you promised each of us through your word, through your death, peril, and your resurrection, the comfort only which you can give by the presence of your Holy Spirit, which becomes resident boss of our lives.
Ush us into the comfort and the security in only which you can promise. Now we pray that you would let that comfort, that peace, and all of the provision that comes with your presence. Dear Lord, let it rest on this family. Let it rest on the immediate and the extended family members. Then, Lord, let it rest on each of us. As we all gather here to be a recipient of only what you can give through your power. Now, as we petition the throne of grace, we wanna thank you again for this season. Thank you for the coming of Jesus. Not only do we thank you for his coming, but we thank you for his death, burial, and resurrection, and then we thank you for the presence of his Holy Spirit, that you promised us that you would make an investment in each of our lives. Then a few days ago, you came back to claim the investment in which you made. The investment that our brother claimed as he trusted in you, that he allowed his faith to move from a definition to a demonstration. Now we claim victory that only you can give. And we continue to trust you as our Savior. In the name of Jesus. Amen. Me and Brother Harvey sung this song together. So I got to do this one. Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Thank you. Lord God. Thank you. Thank you. For the world came. Come on, clap your hands. Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Thank you. Oh, Lord. Thank you. Thank you, Lord. Thank you. Oh, Lord. For the world came. Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Jesus had his arms wrapped around me, and the world Thank you. Lord God. Thank you. Thank you. For the world came. While traveling through this land, Satan is always on my track. He's trying so very hard. He's trying hard to turn me back. But Lord, I'm not alone. You keep on holding me in his arms. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For the world came. While traveling through this land, Satan is always on my track. He's trying so very hard. He's trying hard to turn me back. But Lord, I'm not alone. He keep on holding me in his arms. Thank you. Thank you. Lord, I thank you. Thank you. I thank you, Jesus. Anybody here wanna thank him? Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Woke me up early this morning. Called me in a far right bound. Got me saved all night long. Got my family in his arms. Anybody wanna thank him? Anybody wanna thank him? Anybody wanna thank him? Anybody know he been good? Anybody know he been good? Anybody know he been good? If you know he been good, yeah. Lord, I thank you. Lord, I thank you. For keeping me this far. I thank you, Jesus. Lord, I don't deserve. Lord, I don't deserve. But you keep on keeping me in your care. And Lord, I come to tell you right now that I thank you. Anybody here thank you? Anybody here thank you? Anybody here thank you? Anybody here thank you? If you know he been good. If you know he been good. Would you look at somebody? Would you look at somebody? And tell somebody? Tell somebody? Tell somebody that the Lord has been good? Thank you, Jesus. I thank you, Jesus. I thank you, Jesus. Keep on making a way. Keep on making a way. Keep on making a way. Thank you. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you. For the world came.
Resolutions. New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, 150 Davis Street, Jackson, Tennessee, December the 10th. We are today comforted by the words of our Lord in Revelations 21 and 4, which says, "And God shall wipe away all tears from their eyes; and there shall be no more death. Neither sorrow nor crying, neither shall there be any more pain; for the former things are passed away." Through your days among us were too brief, and our grief at your loss is never-ending. We draw comfort from the knowledge that you have found safe refuge in the Lord and in our hearts, where no darkness or pain can touch you now. We bless you with love, light, and our gratitude. Whereas Deacon Harvey Buchanan of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church passed from this life on Friday, December the 3rd, 2021; and whereas the death of Deacon Buchanan does not diminish the profound benediction of a life lived in each godly service, nor our admiration of an affection for his example; and whereas he faithfully attended God's most urgent obmonation to follow in the footsteps of the righteous, seek justice in all circumstances, and care for the least among us, as if they were the dearest; and whereas Deacon Buchanan was an active member of the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, community of all of his life, and freely gave his time and energy as a lay leader and a faithful member of the Deacon Board, the Male Chorus, the Sunday School Department, and the fifth Sunday Male Chorus. Therefore, be it resolved that we extend our sincere and deepest sympathy to the Buchanan family. We wish all who are now in mourning to take comfort from the immortal words of the great poet Caleb Gabriel, "If you would indeed behold the spirit of death, open your heart wide unto the body of life; for life and death are one, even as the river and the sea are one. For what is it to cease breathing, but to free the breath from its restless tides, that it may rise and expand and seek God uncomfort? And when the earth shall claim your limbs, then you truly dance." Secondly, let a copy of this resolution be given to the family, and a copy to be filed in the archives of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, 150 Davis Street. Prayerfully submitted, Brother Jesse Jacobs, Deacon Board Chairperson, and Sister Deborah D. Phelps, Secretary. At this time, will the class of 1975 please stand? Jackson Central Mary High School, Class of 1975. The original Cougars. Resolution. To the family of Harvey Buchanan, we, the JCM Class of 1975, would like to give you our condolences. Sharon and family, we want you to know that we are friends for life. In your time of bereavement, we weep with you, and we are praying for you and your family. If you need a shoulder to lean on, we're here. If you need a word of encouragement, we're here. We want you to know that you are never alone. We then may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning. Psalms 30 and 5. A man that hath friends must show himself friendly; and there is a friend that stick it closer than a brother. Proverbs 18 and 24. This speaks for our dear friend Harvey, always there to do what he could do for his family, community, and his friends. God promised us long life and good health. Only God knows the number of our days and when those days are up. We must go back to our Creator. This is why the Lord tells us to give thanks in all things. Let's thank God for the time we had with Harvey. Have faith in God and cast all your cares on him; for he cares for you. Know that if you call on Jesus, he will answer. Homely submitted by the Jackson Central Mary High School, Class of 1975. There were several other there were several other resolutions that I will not read, but I will acknowledge who they were from. We have one here from the Johnson Grove Missionary Baptist Church, 10 Huntersville, Denmark Road, Denmark, Tennessee; from the Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church; from the Greater St. Luke Baptist Church. And we also have one here from Representative Johnny Shaw; and we have one from Lane College, Logan Hampton President. Acknowledgement. The family of the late City Councilman Harvey Buchanan wishes to express our sincere appreciation for all acts of kindness shown. Your prayers, thoughts, and kind deeds meant so much to all of us. May God continue to bless each one of you, the Harvey Buchanan family. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the city council members to join me up here. While they're coming, tell a quick story about Mr. Buchanan. First time I laid eyes on him in his sitting. Derek may not want me to tell this. I don't know if I spent more time with Derek or Harvey from working at Catfish Cabin. We were in high school to serve with Harvey on the city council. And there was one Sunday evening, we'd always work double shifts during the weekend to make more money. And Derek had a break, and you and Rico went to go see some young ladies. This was before cell phones, and the car broke down. They were supposed to be back, no one knew where they were. Our boss called the house, and Mr. Buchanan answered the phone. So he went out looking for Derek as well. Well, they came back, and you know, when you come back, you act like nothing happened. He's back working like nothing happened, and all of a sudden, "Oh, Mr. Buchanan's here. There's Mr. Buchanan." He was in the kitchen. He didn't come through the front door, he came through the side door, in the kitchen. And I'm telling you, the man was seven feet tall. When I looked at him, I thought, "Oh, my goodness." And he called. All I did was do this. And Derek went over there, I don't know what he said to him. We didn't ask. I'm sure it was profound because he never wasted a breath, a word. He always had some wisdom to share and was always a mentor and guided everyone. And everyone in this room beyond this room is better because of Harvey Buchanan. And we appreciate him so much. He's a mentor to all of us. So I asked the city council to join me up here, because this is from all of us as well. Whereas Harvey Buchanan passed from this life on Friday, December 3rd, 2021. Whereas the death of Harvey Buchanan does not diminish the profound life lived, nor admiration of, and affection for Harvey. He's a local son of Jackson. And whereas throughout his life, Harvey Buchanan has strived to help others and was devoted to his role as a city council member. Whereas Harvey Buchanan was a constant watchman for the citizens of District 4 for 26 years, and ensured their voices were heard. Whereas Harvey Buchanan served on several Jackson boards and committees, he led by example using the five Ps, three Ds, three Cs, three Ts. Y'all know that because he said it a bunch. Prior preparation prevents poor performance. Desire, dedication, and determination. Conviction, concern, and courage. Time, temperament, and tolerance. Whereas Harvey Buchanan accomplished much in his life while serving the citizens of Jackson and in business. Harvey was generous with his wisdom and was always available to guide the next generation of leaders. Whereas we remember Harvey Buchanan's family and recognize their support of him. His family and his church were the foundation on which he stood so he could serve his beloved city. Whereas Harvey Buchanan's legacy will live on in his loved ones and the hearts of those he touched. Now therefore, I, Mayor Scott Conger, and City Council, Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim November 10th, 2021, as Harvey Buchanan Day. Thank you. Thank you.
To Sharon and the entire family, I'm grateful for the opportunity that you asked me to share in this celebration of life for my good friend Harvey Buchanan. A special person in my life for many, many years. You know, we can consider ourselves truly blessed if once in our lifetime someone comes along with the attributes of Harvey Buchanan. A man whose family came second in his life just after his Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. A man of integrity, honesty, man of compassion, and a man of encouragement. Harvey came into my life during the time his dad bucked. Some of you all may have called him Buck, I called him Mr. Buchanan. After he was first elected as the first African-American member to the Jackson City Council. Had a number of conversations with Harvey at his service station down on Lane Avenue. I found out that regardless of how serious or non-serious those conversations were, that at that bale room, somebody pulled up to get some gas, Harvey would leave the conversation, take care of that customer, fill it up, check the oil, do windshield. So normally what would take two-minute conversation usually took two hours before we finally He was a huge supporter of Lane College and Jackson Central Mary. I've heard those names a number of times during my service as a mayor. Huge supporter of both those great institutions. After his father's death, Harvey was elected to the Jackson City Council and now has the distinct honor of the longest-serving council member to serve this great city. Many of his best friends, and some of you are here today, I know, would get a phone call after Harvey declared for reelection. That phone call that came to my house was usually about 5:30 in the morning. For some strange reason, it always called about 5:30. "Mayor, we got an election going on, and I'm gonna have to have contribution to work the election. Harvey, you have no opposition. There's no one running against you. What do you need the money for?" And I'm sure some of you that received that same phone call told him the same thing. But I can assure you, every one of us gave his contribution to buy his 300 signs which went in his district, which really turned into about 5,000 signs, and you all know that, after driving through his district. He was quite a campaigner and a hard worker. We're a better city for Harvey having served it, and we're a better people for having known him. To all Harvey Buchanan, my friend, it's truly an honor for me. He was indeed special. The scripture which personifies Harvey can be found in Proverbs, Chapter 22, verses 1 through 4, and I'll share that scripture with you. A good name is to be more desired than great riches. Favor is better than silver and gold. The rich and the poor have a common bond. The Lord is the master of them all. The prudent sees evil and hides himself, but the naive go on and are punished for it. The reward of humility and the fear of the Lord are riches, honor, and life. Harvey was special in my life, and Sharon, may God continue to bless you and the family, and bless you abundantly.
Good evening to everyone. Protocol has been established. We've heard words upon Brother Harvey. I have a few words to say. I could say much, much longer, but this is a much harder task for me than you'll ever know. How can I share with you about a lifelong brother and friend of over 60 years in just a few minutes? But I will, because if you knew Harvey, and the mayor just said, you would know he was a man of time and order. The reason he was time and order, one reason, Mayor, is because he got up early, didn't stay up late. I think of that thing out about Harvey. If I called him or went over there or something, "Mac, you know, man, I'm kinda in the bed getting ready. It's seven o'clock." I said, "Man, what are you doing?" But let me go on further. Just show you how close we were. We grew up together as next-door neighbors. Our parents were best friends. We went to school together, played together, went to the same church together. If he could say now, he would say, "Mac, you know what? I got saved on the morning bench before you did. You went on a Wednesday, I went on a Tuesday." He always was competitive. He always was trying and thriving his best, that you heard. That is totally true. As I said, we ate and slept at each other's house, and Harvey loved to eat. And one thing I found out about him growing up, he loved cheeseburgers. Cheeseburgers and him could get along all day and all night. And another thing, as children and teens, when Harvey got in trouble, for some reason it seemed like I got in trouble. I don't know if we both. But the joy of Harvey's life was when Veronica, Harvey's little sweet pea, as he called her, and his little boy, our main man Derek, was born. I remember those times, I was there. He loved his children, and his grandchildren were another great joy of his life. And just to see the face of Derek coming in, maybe from out of town, to see Jeremiah singing his song, to see Chris up in the choir, he was elevated to another level of joy and peace to look on his face. Some of the great memories that stick out in my heart was when Harvey fell in love with Sharon around that ninth or 10th grade. I was there when they got married. And for those of you that don't really know Harvey, you know that once he had something on his mind, "Come on, you know, you know, you already know." He was passionate about it. He could not be swayed. He could not let up. He wouldn't let up. We knew that Sharon was going to be his woman. True enough, she was up until over 40 years, until his death. When I think about doing things on time and in order, I can't help but to think of my brother. For years, Harvey and Sharon and Marie and I brought in the new years, and it started getting close to 12 o'clock, Harvey was calling me, "Mac, what you doing? Where you at? It's almost time to go, man, it's midnight." We had to be on time. We had to be on time with Harvey. And this just didn't start and end when we were growing up. I have to tell you this, and I'm gonna get ready to go back to my seat. But at church, when it was devotion time, you know, I already know, Harvey would stand before the congregation five to 10 minutes before devotion, would keep looking at his watch until all the other deacons was up there to get started on time. Another thing I admired about my brother is that he wouldn't just give me a general introduction to people. He always gave me an elaborate introduction. "This is my best friend Jerome. I call him Mac. I was his best man in his wedding, and he was born two weeks after me. He always gonna let you know I was born two weeks after him. That's why we could never forget each other's birthday, and we could never leave the phone without saying, 'I love you.'" And as I close sharing these moments, I know some of you know him as Harvey Buchanan, Councilman Buchanan, Work Resource Attendant Buchanan, others as Deacon Buchanan. But I will always, always, I say, remember him as my brother and my lifelong friend. Thank you, and may God bless you. God bless you.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Oh, thank God. Thank you, Sharon. The Buchanan family, for this opportunity for me to express all the time that I've known Harvey Buchanan, the great Harvey Buchanan. He was a devoted man, a devoted family man. He was a man of God. He was a hard worker, and he cared a lot about his community. I met Harvey about 40 years ago, when I joined the Boys and Girls Club, and everybody that knew about the Boys and Girls Club knew about Harvey Buchanan.
Yes.
He was a great leader. He was like a father to us all. He kept us out of trouble, kept us in line. He gave us all nicknames. He wanted us all to succeed. Under the leadership of Harvey Buchanan at the Boys and Girls Club, he wanted us all to be like little leaders. He would train us up and teach us and push us out there and tell us how great we could be for the community and to always respect ourselves, respect others, and we gonna make it. He had so much confidence in us. He created, well, he didn't create it, he looked around and he focused in on how we could be great leaders, and he established under his leadership the Keystone Club. It was, once we became teenagers, you know, because when you become teenagers, you kinda fall off and start wanna just do other things. So he kept us in line, and he took us on trips. We represented Jackson, Tennessee, as the Keystone Club. We went all over different places, some of our first times ever leaving Tennessee, and it was a wonderful thing. Sharon by his side, he loved us, loved Sharon. He always let us know, he liked the father, Sharon liked the mother, and I appreciate all they ever done for us. He always told us, be the best you could be, you can do anything you wanna do, you might make mistakes. He said, "Don't focus in on the mistakes you made. Focus in on what you learn from the mistakes, and always go forward." Harvey led by example. He was a leader in our community, District Four. He was the city councilman. I had the opportunity, 2019, to serve under him, and we went out and we campaigned and we won. And we was, you know, Harvey always wanted what was best for our community. He wanted to beautify it, he wanted to improve any improvements, like those wonderful stop signs you see out there, them little fancy ones. And he had, it was this main ditch that served no purpose evidently. He had it sealed in, and that was a wonderful thing in our area. I could go on and on all day about the great Harvey Buchanan. But he would truly be missed. He was a great man. And my prayers for the family, Sharon, Veronica, Derek, may God comfort you and protect and be with y'all always as y'all go on. Harvey was a great man. Thank you.
I hear you. My soul has been, oh, yeah. Has been anchored. The pillar may roll, and the breaker may dash, but I shall not.
but I shall not sway because the home is there. So dark the day, dark clouds in the sky. I know it's alright because Jesus is mine. My, my soul, my soul, my soul, my soul, my, 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 my. My soul, my soul, my soul, my, 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 my. My soul, my soul, my soul has been anchored in the Lord. Grace is gone before anyone. Come before your own mercy. Come before your own grace. To thank you for all your wonderful and mighty blessings. We thank you for this another opportunity to just be in your presence. And as we come before you today, we ask God that you just continue to be merciful. Let your grace and mercy abide in this place. Touch this family in a mighty way. Encourage this wife, amen, give her strength. To look to the Savior, the one that's able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we can ask or even think. Under God's share with your love, Derrick, Veronica, Sandra, Anthony, surround them with your love. Let them know the joy that only comes from you even at this hour. For you still God. Beside you there is none other. We pray that the Spirit of Almighty God dwell in this place. Under the red light. Fill them up. And we can see you in the midst of all the hurt, all the pain, tears that are shed. We want to glorify you. We thank you for this life. Thank you for Harvey Buchanan. Sixty-four years you allowed him to dwell among us. Oh, what a joy. We thank you for all the lives that he touched. And we thank you for the memory that we now have to reflect on. Those lives that he touched, those lives that he encouraged. Those lives that became better because of Harvey. Jackson is all together better. We said thank you. Thank you for the memories. Thank you for the blessing. This we asking Jesus for them. Amen. Amen. Great is our God. And he greatly to be praised. We give honor and reverence to this great God. Jesus the Christ for all the manifold blessings and mercy we've already received this day. What a God. What a Savior. We give honor to they too. This pastor, the angel of this house, vice moderator, Reginald Curry, and the Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church for what they do for this community. So often and so many times they, they share with family that are going through similar trials that they are today. We've been recipients of this, my family. We thank Macedonia. Amen. We give honor to Pastor William Watson, moderator, Brown Creek District Association. Past president, Marvin Mercer, my brother, Dennis Blaline, Tennessee, amen. B M L V Convention, pray God. We thank God for their presence today. All the ministers that come to share with this family. Thank you for your presence. We give honor also to our district's mayor, Scott Conger. Our friend and brother. We thank God for his presence here today. Amen. County Mayor Jimmy Harris is in the house. We honor him today. Former mayor of City of Jackson, Jerry Gess. Thank God for his presence. Amen. I see State Representative Johnny Shaw. My glance is not working properly. But I think that is him. Amen. To all the city officials, judges and city officials, county and city, amen. We honor you today. What a joy to celebrate a life so well-lived. This is reflected of city council. You've already stood, pray God. We thank God for you. Harvey served, amen, this city, District Four, for twenty-six years. Come on, give him a hand. The longest tenure. And he served well, pray God. Amen. I see my friend and brother Mark Kentsen, oh, amen. Salvation Army, amen. Corbin, thank God for you. It is good to be here. To this family. Sharon, we love you. Derrick, God bless you. Amen. Veronica, God is still working on your behalf. Amen. Sandra, I don't see her, pray God, but I hope they did. Oh, there you are. That's the only sister. And she was in the house, that's why I couldn't see her. Pastor Wood, God bless you. Amen. We thank God for each and every one of you. Well wishes. Thank you for coming and supporting this family, pray God. Harvey and I will go way back in our childhood. I was, amen, very pleased when Sharon called and asked me what I do to you again. And without hesitation, I said, yes. She said, Harvey wants you to do the unit. Derrick is always giving his confirmation. Veronica, okay. So it's left up to you to come and do what I asked you to do. I'm here. Amen. We go way back, our childhood. Amen. We grew up in the Mount City community. Amen. They were on Davis Street. They're all looking. Pastor Jimmy threw it there. Amen. They were on Davis Street. We were on Bourbon Street. We could look out our back door. Look on Davis Street and see what was going on on Davis Street. Amen. There was a railroad track separating us, but amen, there was New Hope Baptist Church in the middle of us. We had close ties with New Hope. Amen. And we thank for Father Reverend Swinney. That go way back to some of you may not be familiar with him. But Harvey and I, amen, we grew up in a family that loved discipline. Discipline, us real way. Amen. That, that old African proverb, amen, it takes a village to raise a child. That, that was really, amen, applied to Mount City community though. There was a family that had children that you wouldn't believe. Amen. And it took every, every community household to help raise that child. Amen. The Buchanan, I think they had around ten children, nine, ten children. Amen. Eleven children. Well, Sharon, that was a past that, the Chapman, they had. They, you didn't need to call a family reunion with the Buchanan and the Chapman. That was enough of them. Pray God. We were blessed to be able to come up in that type of surrounding. Amen. That type of community. Mount City was like none other. Amen. I say so often, pray God, East Jackson, South Town, you may have your, amen, memories and all, but it wasn't no community like Mount City community. Davis, Will, Camilla, Southern. We have a lot to be thankful for. Amen. Harvey and I, we grew up, amen, having a love for the community to reach out and help even the youth and do what we could to steer them in the right direction. We, we, we start coaching Little League Baseball with Gillem Lee. He had Sean, baseball team, I am the fighter. I still got the trophy for the championship. I bring him by every now and then. Harvey, you remember this? You tried to excel, but you just couldn't make it. I got the trophy right now. We had a relationship that was, amen, we cherish one another, pray God. As a matter of fact, pray God, he, Harvey's the reason I'm on the Salvation Army board right now. Been on, been there over fifteen years. Scott, that was Mark. Amen. He'd call and say, I need you to do something. I need you to go down and, and sign up to be a member of the board Salvation Army. I bet you got time. Pastor, no, no, they need a preacher on there. Went down, knew all, amen, got familiar with all the ins and outs and joined the board and the best thing I've ever done. Some of you may not even know all the outreaches and the things that the Salvation Army does for this community. Pray God, it's amazing. And we thank God for our co-commander here today, pray God. He, uh, he asked me to go down and I went down and talked to the co-commander and decided to go ahead on be a part of that board and been there over fifteen years now, pray God. And we're so thankful that he asked us to come and be a part of it. Also Harvey was a community, he, he was a person at hands on contact, I guess with being District Four, with the community. Everything in his community, he was aware of, knowledgeable of. Amen. We served and supported the mission commencement on Dwayne Cherry, raise your hand. We would have these gatherings every year. And for COVID came into play and we would come in and fellowship and there was little entertainment that going on. And as you all know, from what's been presented, Harvey loved to sing. And he usually thought he could out sing me. Whatever you need. You know what, amen. We would, we would get that mission commencement and they had Brother Dwayne as a plan. We would take turns going up singing and all. Harvey always wanted to go first. Dwayne, he, he wanted to go first and reach his trail and one of the songs I made, he sung was, amen, that's what we just stated, whatever you need, you can find it in the word of God. Amen. Amen. And that's true. And we're thankful for his service. We're thankful for all that he contributed to District Four, not only District Four, but City of Jackson as a whole. Amen. Harvey left his blueprint, handprint, footprint, and all kinds of prints throughout District Four and Jackson as a whole. Amen. He served, he served faithfully. And I think that was something that he had taken the influence scripture, Revelation two to ten, where the Lord said, amen, he said, be faithful unto death. Unto death, not till death, unto death. And I'll give you a crown of life. Harvey looked for that crown and I tell you what, he getting it right now, pray God. He receiving that which he worked so diligently for. Amen. Amen. And we're thankful for that. Come on, let me go to the scriptures, pray God, and share what the Lord has given me, give you. Amen. What we have here is verse of scripture that found in St. John's. Chapter eleven. And you, you probably familiar with this. But I can get it to work here. Chapter eleven, verse, verses twenty-one, starting at verse twenty-one. I bet it's easy to be going down. First lady, you there? St. John's, chapter eleven. Beginning of the first here come. Verse twenty-one, chapter eleven of John said, then said Martha unto Jesus, "Lord, if thou had been here, my brother had not died. But I know even now whatsoever thou hast of God, God will give it thee." And Jesus said unto her, amen, "Thy brother shall rise again." Martha said unto her, "I know he shall rise again in the resurrection at the last day." Jesus said unto her, "I am the resurrection and life. He that believes in me, though he were dead, yet shall he live." Amen. "Whatsoever thou hast of God, he will do it." Bless his name. We want to talk about whatsoever you need, you can find in Jesus. Whate'er you need, you can find in Jesus. Glory to his name. Whichever you need, you can find in Jesus. Glory to his name. Harvey, he loved to sing that song, "Whatever you need, you can find in the Word of God." That's so true. Family, if you need a friend, there is a friend that's sticking closer than any brother. Sharon, if you need a husband, amen, amen, he'd be a husband for the widower. Derek, if you need a father, he'll be a father for the fatherland. Whatever you need, you can find it in Jesus. If you're sick in your body, amen, you need a great physician, it's in Jesus. Uncle Scott, pray God, let us know that we have Jesus himself. Amen. This passage, let us know that, amen, "One of the seven I am." Seven I am, Jesus talked about in the New Testament, pray God, but one other in this particular passage, he let us know, amen, is relevant right now, even in the midst of death. Hallelujah. You mean, "I am. I am the bread of life. I am the light of the world. I am the door. I am the good shepherd. I am the true vine. I am the way, the truth, and the life." Everything you need is in Jesus. Whatever your need is right now, if you can connect with him, if you can put your trust in him, and if you find out that he's a need supplier. God is not, amen, looking for faults. I know he, he look beyond faults. He not a fault finder. God is a need supplier. Have I got a witness in here? He will supply all your needs according to his riches and glory, amen. And this is what we're telling the family today, put your cares on him. He will supply all your needs according to his riches and glory. Blessed is the one that can trust in the Lord. Somebody tell them, thank you. Martha, pray God, came to Jesus. Amen. After, amen, that sent word to him, amen, Lathers had died. They sent the word to Jesus, amen, when he was sick. Martha, Mary, and Lathers, amen, stayed. They were one that Jesus stayed at the home of. And they loved Jesus. But the main thing is Jesus loved them. Jesus loved them so, pray God, that they felt, amen, whatever the need was that they had, Jesus was able to supply. So what they did, Jesus was away when Lathers got sick. And Martha and Mary sent word to Jesus. And the Bible said that Jesus, amen, stayed away two more days. Hallelujah, that the manifestation of God could be manifested. Oh, bless his holy name. Sometimes, amen, you got to understand, God waves and not our waves. You got to know that God thoughts are not our thoughts. When things doesn't go a long way, you think they should. Amen. God is still working things out for your good. Old Romans eight and twenty-eight, but we know that all things work together for the good of them. They love God. Anybody love God today? Well, he got your back, he working it out for your good. It doesn't matter about the situation. We serve a mighty, mighty God. Jesus stayed away two more days after he found out that Martha and Mary had sent for him. Amen. But when he did decide to come, he told the disciples, amen, he was going to wake Lathers up, wake them up out of sleep. Amen. But they said, "Well, if he's sleeping, he doing well." But Jesus said, "Hold on. No, no, I need to get a little bit more deep into this thing. He's not resting. He's dead." Somebody tell them, thank you. "He's dead, amen, but I must go, amen, and wake him up out of his death." Oh, bless his name. And he started back to Bethany where Mary and Martha was, and Martha seen him for a distance and all. Amen. Ran to him and said, "Jesus, if you had been here." Oh, praise his name. He said, "If you had been here," she said, "my brother would not have died." But Jesus said, "Wait a minute, amen, you will see your brother again. He will live again." And Martha said, "Yes, I know I'll see him in the resurrection in the last day." But Jesus said, "Wait a minute, amen, you don't understand. I am the resurrection." Have I got any help in here? He is the resurrection, amen. I got news for those of you that think that the resurrection is a day in the future. It's not an event today, amen, that the resurrection is not some future happening. Or the day of the resurrection, amen, is not something that will come. The resurrection is a person. Have I got any help in here? The resurrection is Jesus himself. He said, "I am the resurrection. He that believes in me, though he were dead, yet shall he live." I'm glad he didn't stop right there, but he said, "Whosoever believes in me shall never die." This is the joy about it. If you can have the belief, Jesus said to the disciples, amen, he said it in John fourteen, "Let not your heart be troubled." If you can believe in God, believe also in me. There's something about belief that gives you the joy to take care of the moment that you face it. Oh, that joy of the Lord and your strength, pray God, when you, amen, believe in Jesus, put your trust in Jesus, it can change your whole livelihood. Jesus said, "I tell you this, if you can believe, you shall never see death." Believe me, I got news for the family. So much to so many. We thank you for allowing Harvey to pass our way. And because of that, those of us who had contact with him is all together better. We bless you now. We pray you. Metaphor blessed upon this family, this wife, the son, the daughter, sister, brother, all the grandchildren, that you would keep them in your care. And in the days and weeks and months that I'm here, never let us forget. I always passed our way. We thank you now. Blessed as we get ready to go down from here. Keep us in your care. Now, hearts are made glad because Harvey Buchanan came our way. We thank you now. In glory and use. Church say, amen. 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 Glory to God. More tissue if you may come. Tournament would be a talkway memorial.
Jesus said, "Let not your heart be troubled." Believe in God, believe also in me. In my Father's house, there are many mansions. Were not so, I would have told you. I go prepare a place for you. If I go prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you unto myself. Where I am, there he may be also. Where I go, we know, and the way, he know. I will say it unto him, Lord, we know not whether thou owest. How is it? We can know the way. Jesus said, "I am the way." The truth and the love.